It's Jeff.
Oh.
I plead with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Rule call.
Pippiya?
Present.
Schroller?
Here.
Hughes?
Here.
Feigman?
Present.
Frye?
Present.
Behrens?
Here.
Fromm?
Here.
Seven oh, we have it formed.
All right. First up, we have the approval of amendments. Does anybody have any amendments or changes?
Move to approve April 28th meeting as presented.
Second.
Any other discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Passes seven oh.
Okay. Next up is appointments. I've nominated Parker Price to fill the empty council seat that Gina Graham previously held. Do you have any discussion or does anybody just want to make a motion?
Move approve mayor's appointment, Parker Price, Councilmember Ward one.
Second.
Any more discussion? Rule call.
Pippiya?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Feigman?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Behrens?
Yes.
Fromm?
Yes.
Seven oh, passes.
All right.
I guess you got the only empty one? Yes.
Do we have to go through that oath and sign it? Somebody else did.
Yep. You got it? Yep.
Now you want to do this?
Just bring it here. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And I will faithfully perform.
I will faithfully perform.
The duties of Councilman Ward one.
The duties of Councilman Ward one.
To the city of Marysville, Kansas.
City of Marysville, Kansas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Actually, just for.
Welcome along.
Take it easy on them in this meeting.
All right, next up, we have business discussion items. MCAC fundraiser is first up. Do they have any discussion on that item?
I think it's far enough down the line that we shouldn't have to reschedule it in case something happens.
What?
It's far enough down the line, I don't think we'll have to, they'll have to reschedule it if the phase two doesn't kick in, so.
Unless it get.
Yeah.
That being a little backup again.
Yeah. Move to approve the MCAC fundraiser for seven eighteen of twenty for the use of tennis courts.
Second. Any more discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven oh.
Eight oh.
Eight oh, sorry. You're right.
Next up is the Veterans Memorial. Did we get any more information or anything on that? Had somebody called me and said somebody was going to possibly get some more information, but.
He came.
Did he?
Yeah, and he just wanted to reiterate what we'd already said. He had said that he and I had spoken and we were in agreement and he had spoken with John. This is Barry Bussing, who is the president of this organization, and Dennis Mason had just asked him to come here, although Barry knew that he couldn't because of COVID, so he's, he's on board with this. This is, he knows this is what we need to do, the organization does. The Veterans Memorial organization.
So we're basically dropping the insurance on it, correct?
Correct. The property insurance only. The city has always carried the liability. They've never paid for that.
Okay. So basically, we're dropping the property insurance now.
They are, because they've always paid for it.
Okay.
So the liability is only if somebody would get hurt or something.
Correct.
Yeah, there's, there's the, there's the.
Well, it won't be covered if, if somebody comes in and destroys the memorial.
Then it's on them.
Then it technically is on them. There is a provision in the deed that says if their organization faults, we as a city take over the memorial. So if. That happens.
And they've agreed to the contract set up forth by you, John?
As far as I know, there's no complaint.
He was fine.
Okay.
It's a whole, basically a whole harmless agreement.
Alan Schroller.
What was that?
I didn't hear you.
Uh, it's basically a whole harmless agreement, and then we, we stand up, so. It's basically a whole harmless agreement where they agree that the property insurance will be dropped. And they are, it kind of recites the history of the whole thing, so we have something to write. I put it on just on the document so it can be recorded, so it can be recorded to court out, so if it's ever lost, it's never a record, it's a permanent record. So everybody has a good understanding of what the deal was. I have included Dennis Mason on there because he's always been kind of spokesman. And I can be helpful for him to know what the actual deal is, and therefore I put him on there as kind of a liaison for the Veterans Memorial. Any other, any other questions?
And then they're going to be paying the electricity now too, so we are not liable for that either anymore, right?
Haven't they been paying the electricity?
No.
No, that's what they pay the mass for us to pay.
Right.
Which the, which the original minutes said that they should have always been paying unless their group disbands because the maintenance is on them.
Move to approve the hold harmless identification agreement with March County Veterans Memorial.
Second.
Okay, any other, any more discussion? I think we'll call on this one. Rule call.
Pippiya?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Feigman?
Yeah.
Frye?
Yes.
Behrens?
Yes.
Fromm?
Yes.
Uh, Price?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
All right. Next up, we have temporary placing of tables on the sidewalk to the east side of the empty cup.
I didn't see anything in the code book that said we couldn't do it. Did I miss something, Austin?
There's something that says you can't block sidewalks. But this would not block the sidewalk entirely, so it, um, but it doesn't say you can't block it partially, so that's why it's coming.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's why I was asking. I thought there was something, but I didn't, I looked, but I didn't find what I was looking for.
Yeah, yeah, there, there's other things that says you can't put things on Broadway and what other streets?
Center.
Center, uh, on the sidewalks, so, uh, but this is not either one of those.
On Broadway.
Yeah, uh, but you can't obstruct, uh, any sidewalk in town, so this, this would get around that temporarily.
Any idea, do we have a timeframe as to how long? It just says temporarily.
Did she ever say how long?
She did not say how long, but she just indicated it was during the COVID.
My, yeah, my guess would be until you hit stage, or you pass stage three. Whenever that would be.
I think June fifteenth.
Yeah.
And that's a pretty clear.
Yeah, ten of the date.
I know she went out to make sure that ADA could get by. There'd be at least five foot.
If you, if you want to say to the end of June, I mean, that gives.
Yeah, you could say.
I think we should just.
I hear you.
I think we should set a timeframe and not let her decide, you know, when the end of the COVID, so June thirtieth. You know, I just, I don't think we should leave it open.
Right.
It can always be extended.
Yes.
Right, because if it needs to be extended, she can always re-ask, but.
I think we should probably develop a policy that allow businesses to set up seating on Broadway anyway. I thought for a long time that it would be good to try to get more people downtown in the evenings and weekends when it's not, you know, disease season or whatever. So, I mean, maybe, yeah, make this temporary, but I think we should see what other communities have done as far as kind of a policy for what they do and don't allow and spacing and things. And that way we can have, if somebody hit the wagon wheel or say, I don't know, any other business, the Chinese restaurant for Pete's sake, anybody wants to set up a table outside or a couple of tables, well, this is what our policy is, this is what we do. I just think it'd be a good thing to encourage if places want to do it.
Austin, how deep are the sidewalks on Broadway?
Um, sidewalk, oh, this one is eleven foot wide.
No, not, not on the side street, not on the number street.
That's, I think that's pretty standard. Eleven to twelve.
Yeah, although it is prohibited by code right now on Broadway.
Okay, but it is about twelve, between eleven and twelve.
Yeah, they're about the, you go around that corner, it looks exactly the same.
Okay.
The porch swings have things on the, usually have things, Garden of Eden has, porch swing used to have a board thing out in the middle of the thing.
Yeah.
Flags, and it was always falling over. I go in and tell them they need to pick their thing up because it was in the middle of the street and falling over, blown over, you know, it was always, so, I mean.
Move to approve letting empty cup bar and V-Stroke place three tables on the east side of H Street till June thirtieth?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All papers say aye, or you want to rule call this one? Okay, rule call.
Price?
Yes.
Pippiya?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Feigman?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Behrens?
Yes.
Fromm?
Yes.
Eight oh, it passes.
Okay. Next up, we have the mosquito squad proposal, and I mean, we did the same thing last year. The areas that were being treated are the same as what they treated last year. Our, our price went down some because last year was forty-three twenty, this year's thirty-seven seventy-five. Didn't we ever find out exactly why that was? But anyway, it's cheaper than it was last year, so.
Since we don't have much going on, I don't know if it's really necessary.
We, we definitely have more people going to our parks.
Oh, by far.
Yeah, they have filled up, this is how we can tell. They've filled up our trash cans and we've had to pick it up, empty the trash cans more often. They are definitely down in our parks.
City, city park is just that walk trail around it is just, there's always somebody on that going.
And it was full Sunday for Mother's Day, there was a group down there.
I have a question. When they do the, the lake, they're kind of called the lake, is that proposal just for our side of it, or is that for?
Correct, just our side.
For our side.
It's our side.
Basically, from the back of the diamonds from the lake, there's a strip back there.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. And a lot of people, I, I see when you go by, people fishing out there.
I'm a firm believer that that's not.
Yes.
We've had ours sprayed already the first time this year.
And you know, the people have talked about it last year after we did it about, you know, the, how quickly they went down into city park and stuff, you know, a lot of water standing down there, so.
So they want to make a motion?
Move to approve mosquito squads proposal for three thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars to spray at city park, country club, darkets, Kester House, and lines.
Are we going to have the playground open at darkets though?
I'm hoping after the.
Eventually.
In June.
As long as the governor's orders hang out.
But the governor has it open May, don't they?
The.
Actually, the governor clarified, I don't know if you've been watching the frequently asked unanswered questions, one was about parks, and the governor basically said parks have really been off limits for the governor, it's really up to the city, city property, city control. And so they really said, provide really no guidance on the parks. Just way I read that, it just came out. Was it last, last Monday?
Something, I think they were. Yes.
So what they're basically saying is, uh, it's okay, that was, when she decides to, if she lifts it, so.
I hear you.
And, okay, so what I'm understanding this now, since the governor's turned it over to municipalities basically, is if they lift it on the eighteenth, then the parks will be open.
As long as we agree and say.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the municipality, we decide to let that happen.
But just because we open the parks don't mean we have, we open the playground equipment, correct?
Right, yeah.
We just opened the park.
Right.
Yeah.
Which we've never closed.
We've nev, we've never really.
Like I say, we've never closed the parks.
We've never really closed the parks themselves.
Just the playground equipment is all we have.
Everything.
Basketball court. Yeah, basketball court.
Right.
Tennis courts.
They're like three of them, they're playing the other day. And I mean, it's going to happen.
We're not going to curb it.
No. Now, there's fifteen of them up there, you know, but.
Like they can't stop, they opened the beaches in Florida and had, at Naples, and had to close them again.
Do the shark, oh, the shark?
No, because too many people.
People are, yeah.
Were there.
Were they?
We have a motion second, didn't we?
It is.
Any more discussion? Rule call.
Price?
Yes.
Pippiya?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Feigman?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Behrens?
Yes.
Fromm?
Yes.
Eight oh.
Okay, next up, we have the code book. And there were a lot of changes, I mean, it wasn't really changes so much as it was clerical issues and kind of trying to clean the code book up. Things that referenced ordinances that had changed or been done away with and certain parts of the code book that had been changed to different areas. I don't know, did you have any questions?
No, I got a couple of questions.
Okay. Yeah.
The one twelve to one thirteen, I, I don't understand, we're removing it, when did we repeal this?
Uh, which, when you talking, you talking about the, on the East Side Water District?
It's, it's, when I was reading through it, I don't have my list here, but.
Uh, there's your, there's your list from last week.
I feel the council should at least repeal it, if it was something we put in, in our book to begin with.
It was about east side, west side?
East side.
East side.
Oh.
The east side sewer district that wanted down. Yeah, the east side. It, basically what happened is the council had a special meeting and said that that ordinance no longer applies, so it's not, it's not, it expired basically, is what it did. We can't, we couldn't follow it anymore because the time limit had gone past. So that is why, to remove it, other than the paragraph under, uh, that I, uh, that I'm attaching to two four, or that we would be attaching to fifteen dash two four six. That's the only part that we can enforce.
Well, then that kind of turns into an amendment.
It's, to the book, to the code book, yes, and that's what this is about.
Yeah, but we should have voted on it before we included it.
It's in the book. It's the, it's not, it's, you are voting on it right now.
And originally, you voted on it at the special meeting. I can pull those minutes, that you all agreed that that would no longer be enforced.
I'm pretty sure we came up after that meeting and said we're no longer going to.
Absolutely.
That, I can't remember if we voted on it, but it.
Every single person had to say it. I, I have the minutes, which I can keep moving. Because that's how the mayor handled it.
And it was all referenced to?
To that.
East side sewer.
East side sewer, yes.
We're just going to move it around. I'm having a lot of trouble trying to understand that, but.
Uh, it expired, we can't enforce it anymore, so there's no reason to have it still in the code book.
One more question.
Move approve ordinance eighteen ninety-one, ordinance adopting the codification of the ordinance of the city of Marysville. Right.
All right, any other discussion? Rule call.
Price?
Yes.
Pippiya?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Feigman?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Behrens?
Yes.
Fromm?
Yes.
Passes eight oh.
Eight oh. All right, uh, next up, we have the contract on one oh one South Fourth. Parker, you don't really know, I guess, a lot of what's going on. Would you, does council want to go into executive session and discuss this and kind of update Parker on where we're at on that, or? What do you think, Parker? Are you fine, or?
I'm actually, Mayor, I'm, I'm fine.
Fine, okay.
I understand the two houses, one of them that we already bought, the other one that the county bought.
Right.
And you're basically going to run it for another year and then you're going to give them a final win.
I have some, something I want to discuss before we vote on this.
And, like this session?
No.
Or this, okay.
Okay. I feel like there's plenty of room down there in the property we already own, where the other buildings are, and I did take some pictures, if anybody wants to look at them, because we bought Donna Aldman's house, and where that is, I feel like there's room to probably put up the building, if we want to build a building for the pumper truck or the sewer truck, that we could easily put in a building there, because there's plenty of room on that side there to put up a building if we want to, and where the, and where the firehouse is, and we're going to get the room there when we take out the fire trucks and move them up where the new firehouse is, and, uh, the house is valued at thirty-eight thousand dollars. We'll lose seven hundred and one dollars in taxes, and that's what they paid in two hundred and nineteen. Uh, and there's room on the backside of the building that we have now, on the east side of Fourth Street, that, there's plenty of room back there, and there's pictures here of, anybody wants to see it. There's lots of room, I saw, there's nothing parked down there. You can build a lean-to, or you can build a, a building back there where they can park vehicles, or you can put pipes in there, all that stuff. I mean, we could easily organize stuff down there. There's room on the backside, on the Elm Street side, where there's just tires and stuff down there, there's a big tree. I mean, why do we need more property to build, build something or put buildings? There's another building that has two doors in it, I don't know what's in there, I told her storage. I mean, there's, there wasn't vehicles parked in this area. I mean, why do we need more property to, to put more stuff in? There's plenty of room to build down there on the property we have now. And why are we taking this other house off of the tax rolls? We're spending fifty thousand on it, and we've got to tear it down. We could easily take that money and put it in that more building, another building down there on the property we already have. I mean, it's silly. We just need to organize the stuff we have down there now. I mean, I, I, I just don't see it.
I agree with you.
With what we have now, when we go ahead and, we could use the newer equipment of these buildings, if anybody here.
I hear you.
Yeah, okay, I, I'm just saying, if we're going to buy, we're not going to buy brand new equipment, we want to keep, we get newer equipment. You know, when we do that, we trade out and we'll get newer equipment. Are these buildings down there capable to park these, this equipment in? Does anybody know?
No, they're not.
No.
Shot building is.
Thank you. There's, there's, there's room to build buildings down there if you want to. Why do you have to tear down, why do you have to buy this house to?
There's, there's not enough room, I don't think, with just Donna's property to build much of a building down there. Even if you started the new building, basically right where the street shop ends now, there's not enough. You're talking maybe two lots wide, maybe eighty feet long.
There's room in the middle of all this stuff, of all the buildings that are already there, to put in plenty of room. The whole backside of the building that's down each side.
What's the square footage of that space you're talking about? What's, what's the square footage area of that space you're talking about? Well, I can't tell with the pictures, I mean, you know what, how, the square footage?
Well, I didn't go down, I didn't go on the property, but just look, there's a whole backside of this building, this was all empty, this was all empty, behind the shop that's there now.
Well, what, how big of an area is that, though, compared to the size of the building they want to put on?
Well, it's, it's, it's bigger, it's bigger than where, than where, uh, Rennbaum's building is, house.
Are you meaning any alley? Is that what you're talking about?
No, behind the shop that's there now on Elm Street.
Water shop, the city shop?
Yes.
Okay, you're talking about in the center?
Yes.
Okay, isn't that number one, is that an alley that we can't build across?
No.
An alley? Sure, that's an alley going right next to the house, and we even have some.
There, no, it's, it's this here, behind here, this is, this is, this is the water shop here.
Talking their parking, their parking area?
That's where they're parking.
There's, there's nothing parked there.
That's where they.
That's ways parked, ways parked.
Sunday.
That is where the employees park when they go down.
But there, there's, you can park on the street, there's all kinds of room in here to park.
Okay, you want to demolish that building then?
No.
Okay, then now we're going to talk about the equipment. All the equipment that you buy now is bigger than what you have. A backhoe takes a sixteen-foot door to drive it in and out. Am I very far off key? It takes sixteen foot tall to drive that back home and out, along with the load. Standard dump truck is probably ten foot six tall, could be up to eleven three.
You, you got the, you got the whole factory, you got, you got property on Elm Street behind this, where that big tree is?
I, I know exactly what you're talking about now, especially from the picture, but.
There's, there's.
You're taking into no account of moving twenty to twenty-five foot long pipes on the front of machines in a bundle. You're taking into absolutely no account of how big the equipment is. You're taking into no account that windscreen trucks do not turn like your car. You have to have room to maneuver. You put a trailer behind any of this equipment, that dump truck, that trailer, you're probably looking forty feet long. I drag this up every day. I know exactly what it takes to maneuver.
Well, and I know the other thing, the pipe setting on the south side of the water shop down there, you know, we were told by one pipe guy that was bringing it in, that we needed to get some of that inside because the sun fading on it is detrimental.
You got to break the pipe, you can't put it in the ground because it's probably going to blow apart. And if it's twenty feet long, you need at least a twenty-one foot door to get it through. Or you could make them break. Or you could make them break it apart and try and hand stack twenty foot long sections in there, but half the back injury waiting to happen.
Well, they clean off the stuff on the west side of the block and, and come in from that way. Take out the?
The fuel pumps?
Huh?
West side of the block, the fuel pumps, the new salt shed, all that? Is that where you have them?
No, the fuel, well, the salt chains, there, but there's still, there's still stuff that you can come in from the west side.
That is the sidewalk, and then there's fuel pumps right behind it. You can't take out your own sidewalk, they make everybody else in town.
I mean, there are spots where, where buildings could be built, but not a building.
I'm, I'm not disagreeing.
You'd have to build several small buildings.
You're not gonna cobble up in there to, to get the square footage that you need. Has anyone asked what it would take to take down the old water pump?
Not yet, no.
Uh, it sounds scary, but that's the reason I asked, cause I wanna be concrete and build the old days, so it's gotta be tough.
Yeah, it's not only that, I know that red building, some of those, they, there are pipes and junctions and stuff underneath those.
Yeah.
And you can't just.
Yeah.
You can't just build it, you wouldn't wanna build over the top of them.
No, you gotta, you'll fill a lot of the traction.
No.
Well, the clear wells in the main water plant itself are thirty feet deep underneath there.
Is that what they are?
They're a guarantee, if you wanna build a shop, then it's bigger than.
And then take that out, and then, and then build stuff, and then build a new building there.
You'd be sixty feet down.
That's what we're talking about, the water.
I bet you were talking about the water plant.
This, that's water plant back there, because I remember touring it and showed how they clean the water and get the whole line yard.
No, I'm talking about the city building, the building itself, where the guys work out of now.
So you wanna tear down that building and then put a different one up there?
Make a new building there on the wa, on the city property.
That?
The street shop or water department shop?
Water department shop.
Water department shop where kids at. You would, if you're gonna do that, and there's an alley that goes right behind that, correct?
Yeah, there's an alley right behind there.
Right beside it.
Right beside it. Right beside it.
Yeah, then there's a house.
Rennerbaum's house.
You just. Whether we like it or not.
Well, you could.
Whether we like it or not, we need, or we need a bigger equipment, and we wanna keep it good instead of taking it for these repairs for, leaving it out in the sun, and like you said, leaving the pipes out in the sun. We were told about that a few years ago, how it makes the material, um, deteriorate. Whether we like it or not, we're not saying we're gonna get it and build it right away. All we're asking for is to get the land so they can just park there and we can get things. I know it's, it's a bitter pill. It's a bitter pill, nobody likes spending that kind of money. I, I, there's certain parts of this I think safe, period, and I'm not gonna go into it. But if we're gonna, if we're gonna get these guys and keep these guys busy and give them good equipment, cause you can't give people crappy equipment to break down all the time. We have to keep updating them, which is a problem too, sometimes it can hold. And it's not like we're doing it, we're hitting the top end of their equipment. You know, when we get these better equipment, we need to take care of it, period. That's the way I feel about it.
I mean, you could, you could tear down the building that they've got and build a new shop in that same spot, but at the same time, you're losing. I mean, the building that they got now is, is good for some purposes, just not equipment. So if you go tearing that down, you couldn't build a structure of that size for fifty thousand dollars, I don't think.
No.
Kinda like you can even touch it. So if you can keep that building and find a use for it, it's not driving large pieces of equipment to build it and that kind of thing. To me, it makes sense to keep that rather than tear it down and have less square footage when we're done.
We're not gonna have less, we're gonna have more.
Pour it down and build up again.
If you did that way, you would, because you'd lose that entire building.
We're gonna.
If you tore down.
If you tore down, you would lose that square footage that you've got now, that is not usable for equipment, but is usable for parks and Christmas decorations and all sorts of other things that we store.
How many other buildings, how many other buildings you got down there that you can put stuff in?
They've got stuff in every building that they've gotten down there as far as I know.
Plus that Schmal.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're storing equipment at head of Schmal last time out.
Yeah, we are.
Austin took me on a tour and it was full.
Everything's, everything's full, everything's full.
And jam back.
When they track all their equipment in the street shop, do they even have related places to work?
No.
On their equipment? Do they have a designated break room in any of these places?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of, yes.
They got, they got.
Yeah. And street, I mean, when we get the fire station built then, that will free up some stalls for the street department.
They do have to back everything up to work on anything in the street shop.
Yeah, and that's a problem.
I just feel like even if you tore down the building they have now and make a bigger, newer building and, and use the, some of the property they have inside of there, you could make it nicer and bigger.
Like I say, you could do that, but you're gonna lose that square footage that you could use for storing other things that fit in there, and it's gonna cost you more if you were trying to replace that square footage, then it's gonna cost you for the fifty thousand dollars to buy this property and this building, new building on that. And you still have the old building that you can store, like I say, the smaller stuff and the Christmas decorations and some of the stuff maybe that we have at head of Schmal, that we are having to move out of there from time to time when they have some things going on, and, and keeping it in one spot permanently. That's my, my thinking on it. So, any more discussion?
No. I feel strongly, the way Diane does about this, but it's more about the timing element. Why we can't put this on hold? Three, four months, five months, whatever it takes to find out where our country's going before we're going into a kind of build something that's gonna have a place for good equipment because the whole rest of the town also might need something too. Why can't we put this on hold? We could keep bringing it up, it's like, we gotta buy it now.
Well, it's the land. We're not gonna build right away, that's the whole point. Right now, it's the land, because maybe it's gonna go continually go bad, maybe it's not. And if things get better, and when word is out that we've already won, and we've seen this happen, when they see the city wants land, cha-ching, cha-ching, cha-ching. We ran into that one situation on one piece of land, instead of going down and kept going up. Not asking, I, I, if I understand what is being said here, we're not asking to build. We're not asking to build, we need to get it while we have got the cash. Austin, have we had cash put away for this?
Yes.
We've had cash put away for this. That's, and that's probably my strongest, it's a, we might as well do it if we've got it, because real estate, historically, never goes down, especially if we get past these moments in the next few months. You think that real estate's gonna be cheap? It's not gonna be cheap, you know, it's not cheap now. So if we have the opportunity, and like I said, there's certain parts of this, you know, but what can you do? I don't have, I don't know the law, so.
I would go along with your whole theory, except we're not gonna borrow money to buy it because of the way the interest rates are, and it's a bargain to buy something now. Down the road, if we need to put four or five thousand dollars more with it, we could still either buy that property or get along without it and find out where we're going first. I feel strongly that way.
I mean, there's, there's still one more property that ideally we would get in the future before we would build a shop on that site.
Yeah.
We don't have to have it, but ideally you would have it. But the thing is, if, if you put off buying this property, thinking you're gonna wait until the time when the other, when both of them come available at the same time, that is probably never gonna happen. You lock in what you can, and then you hope that the other one falls in place from the never line. Cause the chances are, if you pass on this one, in two years from now, the other property comes up for sale, the other person's either gonna want more money, or they've changed their mind at that point, and then you're right back where you were.
And we're only paying half this year?
Yeah, it'll be spread over two, but years, which helps somewhat.
But the taxpayers are gonna pay fifty thousand dollars for it eventually.
They bet.
It don't matter, we're not borrowing money, we got money.
Correct.
But we might need it for something else.
Got the lagoons now, we gotta do something with, we got lots, we got lots of streets that need to be done. We got lots of stuff we need to spend money on.
And like, like I've said before, my, my view on this is that you don't put off purchases or things that are part of a long-term plan or a long-term vision. If I, if we have to put up a street, that street will be there next year. This land may or not, may not be for sale next year. It's something that might not be around. I would, I would lock in land while you can, and then if we have to make other cuts, like we did with, uh, not doing that one large project that came in quite a bit above what it was supposed to, then in my feeling, those are where you make your, your cuts.
We've already cut that this year, so.
Yeah, we have.
I mean, it's not like.
Yes.
We're overspending. Oh, you didn't, this is gonna be a, after discussion, everybody has their say, is there some vote on this?
No, once we, before we can discuss it after you submit next motion to the second, I usually let everybody discuss till I do a rule call.
Move approved, purchase the property, one oh one South Fourth. Allow the mayor to sign the contract.
Second.
All right, uh, any more discussion? Rule call.
Price?
Yes.
Pippiya?
Yes.
Schroller?
No.
Hughes?
No.
Feigman?
Yes.
Frye?
No.
Behrens?
Yes.
Fromm?
Yes.
Pass is five three.
Okay, next up, we didn't have anything though this, this, in hearings, did we? Uh, next up is a consent agenda. Does anybody have any discussion on any of the items on there?
When was, is Gina's sister still getting married? When was that?
What?
In June.
Sure.
It's in June, but it's not on our property, it's at, uh, UPD.
Oh, cause I thought something was at.
It might be this same weekend, this is, um, at the art center.
I know, but I thought something was, of theirs was at the art center too.
No.
Uh, who? Yeah, the rehearsal supper is.
Yeah.
Oh, it's at the depot, the wedding.
The wedding was, but the rehearsal I thought was at the art center.
We don't, we don't schedule the art center. And they, and she said she had spoken with the, the art center people, so.
Yeah. That's why I was just confused.
They scheduled that. Yeah, the art center.
Okay.
Move approved, consent agenda, consumption request for the series rehearsal wedding, request for funds for convention tourism, surplus guns, preventive maintenance agreement with BMW Electric, clerk's report, revenue expense report, and this was that judge's report.
Have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Rule call.
Price?
Yes.
Pippiya?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Hughes?
No.
Feigman?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Behrens?
Yes.
Fromm?
Yes.
Pass is A.O.
Uh, next up we have appropriations ordinance number thirty-seven twenty-three.
Move approved, appropriation ordinance thirty-seven twenty-three in the amount of two hundred and six thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty cents.
Second.
Any more discussion? Rule call.
Price?
Yes.
Pippiya?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Feigman?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Behrens?
Yes.
Fromm?
Yes.
Pass is A.O.
Okay, staff reports.
Uh, first thing on the list is wastewater engineering RFQ. Included are qualifications from two engineering companies to do the engineering for the lagoons to, to comply with KDHE's requirements.
Can you talk a little louder, Austin?
Uh, BG consultants and CES submitted qualifications. However, CES didn't feel like they could properly advise us in the timeframe given for the CDVG application if we were going to submit this year. If we decided to wait until next year's application process, they would be more than happy to help us. Uh, BG consultants didn't feel they could make the deadline for this year's CDVG application. If you want to stick with our original plan, to go with this year's CDVG application, we only have one choice. Uh, as of right now, uh, if we were to wait until next year, uh, we got two to talk about.
Mike, I thought we would, I thought we needed, we were kind of on a pretty tight time schedule.
Yes, uh, if we were to do the CDVG for this year, yes.
That would probably be a, a good idea.
Yeah.
Considering we don't know how much of this is gonna have to be done.
Okay.
I don't know, that's just.
Right, and both candidates have plenty of experience. I mean, obviously you can go through and look at their, uh, what they've done, uh, uh, through their experience. Uh, both have decent wastewater experience, uh, I thought both of them could do the job. So it's, I mean, that's, I guess we're ba, we could base it off, off the timeline, uh, if we wanted to move forward with this.
We've had pretty good luck with BG.
Yes.
Yes. So what do you do? Make a motion? Uh, make a motion that we accept the BG consultants for the wastewater engineering.
Yeah, that's good.
Second.
Any more discussion? Rule call.
Price?
Yes.
Pippiya?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Feigman?
No.
Frye?
Yes.
Behrens?
Yes.
Fromm?
Yes.
Seven one.
Okay, uh, next one up is repair to the generator down by the main wastewater lift station. Uh, needs a new radiator and thermostat, attaches the quote from Foley Equipment, uh, to repair the generator. This generator needs to be operational so that our main lift station can continue to function, uh, and pump sewage while the power, there is no power. Uh, Foley estimated, uh, cost for new generator would be fifty thousand dollars. I look for approval, uh, to Foley's bid because it is, uh, Foley is, is a supplier because it's a CAT generator.
I think money weighs, this isn't the first time we've had work on this.
Well, we do, we have how many generators that are cats? We have multiple cats. Uh, so it, we may not have done work on this one.
The police departments, we did a bunch of work on.
We did, work on the last. Yes, so I, I don't, I don't remember doing extensive amount of work on this one.
Okay.
This one here runs quite a bit.
Right.
Austin, how many hours on this machine?
I don't have that right offhand.
Now, this is only an estimate cost.
Right, I mean, that's, it's, that's what it is. It depends, they're not gonna charge us, they typically don't charge us more unless they find out that it's not just the radiator, it's something else. It's, it's just what it says there, that's what the cost's gonna be.
How many hours of labor are they calculating on this?
We don't say.
How many hours of labor?
They never tell you that.
It's up to three thousand dollars worth of hours of labor, I wanna know what that is per out, per unit. That's, it seems like a lot, doesn't it?
Cause they had, how many, they had three guys working on it?
Eight, three.
Yeah, two. Two guys.
Two guys, that's why, yeah, two guys.
And that doesn't include travel time.
Yeah, well, I say that travel time's built out too, I mean, if they're talking about three trips, maybe, then I'm starting to think, okay, but if this is one day.
It's a one-day job.
My memory, I, um, a CAT travel takes five hundred bucks to show up.
Yep.
Yep.
In this case, it's, uh, seven hundred and five bucks to show up.
Yeah.
You're, go consider yourself lucky.
Yep.
Otto, I'm just thinking, in the, in the future, we should consider maybe labor rates and things when we purchase equipment down the line. That, that could be something we need to think about in relation to overall cost of ownership.
Right.
Do you have any idea how old this machine is?
We got, um, we bought them all at once.
I think about two thousand and eight, don't hold me back, but I think it's about two thousand and eight when we bought it. And we bought, like, Dave Schaefer was at CAT at that time.
Yeah, you did, I mean, I know you bought a lot.
And we bought three of them.
Police here, down there.
Water, the well. Well, we had a well. For.
What, yeah.
So why can't we just order the parts and do it ourselves?
We don't have any.
We, nobody, we have works on large engines like this.
We find somebody and work, next time we're hiring, can we find some?
Having them work on the computers as well while they're doing this, I, I, I can only guess. I mean, we don't have anybody that, locally, uh, we've tried that, we, we have tried that. Uh, we don't have anybody that wants to work on the computers, the, the, the engines at the same time. Uh, if we had somebody local, uh, we would probably have them on staff and, uh, on contract rather than BMW.
So they just say estimate and that's, that's the price, then they just say estimate?
Yes, uh, if you go back a few different, uh, times we get quotes, uh, they'll say at least, either say estimate or quote. If everything goes by what they say right here, it'll be this.
What is their shop rate? I mean, that's, I know, it's, I think it's strange they don't tell you that, but.
Hold on, here they have a firm price and they have an estimate price too on the bill. They don't have.
Yeah, that's also a big call, I think.
Honestly, I don't, I don't have a problem with it at all.
And they say it's not that bad a bid. We just pulled a new garbage strip, but the cost's close to that, so.
Kevin and I just talked, Kevin's only sent a machine down before, get twenty some thousand dollars with done on us, didn't blink an eye about it.
Moved approved Foley bid for the, come out of the sewage replacement fund for the generator repair at the lift station. If we don't get it done when we need it, uh, there'll be some flooded basements down into down. We don't want that.
Yep.
Second.
All right, any more discussion?
Can we, when you contact them, can you just casually see if you can wiggle out of them what their shop rate is? Just because you, I'd be nice.
The unit prices?
Yeah.
It's all that mess with the shop rates.
Yeah, well, they might give some.
Some of these companies will do it by the job. In other words, if I do a radiator, this is what it costs. If I do, uh, overhaul, it costs this, and they won't break down the hours. No, they don't. It's in the book. I don't know.
Yeah.
Do you ask them how many hours it is?
And then the only variable is the drive time.
If you make two people for what it costs, that's what they're charging an hour.
It's going to take two people pull a radiator out of that big thing down there.
And crane.
The travel time is a lot.
That's what it is.
It was quite slow.
Well, their equi, the equipment they're driving i- is also what's factored in there, so.
Big, uh, Tana Max truck with a tony, with a tony with a gun or whatever.
Yeah. They might be four miles.
Yeah.
Cheaper places than what it is there.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Price?
Yes.
Pipia?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
These are messed up, sorry. They're going to be messed up. Feigman?
What?
You're, no.
No, it's messed up because of, here we go. I'll use the front page on the edge. It's because we keep moving you guys. Right, okay. Hughes?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Feigman?
No.
Frye?
Yes.
Behrens?
Yes.
Fromm?
Yes.
Seven one.
Uh, attached is information, uh, about phasing back to normal based on the governor's executive order. Phase one includes social distancing in groups, uh, of only ten people or less and runs from May fourth to May seventeenth. Phase two bumps up to, uh, thirty or less, uh, runs, uh, from May eighteenth to May thirtieth. Phase three bumps it up to groups of ninety or less and runs, uh, from June first to June fifteenth. All these phases include social distancing and cleaning guidelines we would have to follow. With all this in mind, the plan for the opening of city facilities is as follows. City Hall and police departments, uh, not before June one. Recreation vault complex, uh, no practice before June one, uh, first game June fifteenth. And that was discussed with Brian Frogel as well as the, uh, uh, Legion, uh, vault, person, uh, museums, uh, or the museum, not before June five. Park bathrooms, playgrounds, not before June fifteenth. Pool, not before June nineteenth, pending staffing availability and certification, and council meetings held as they are for the month of May. These dates keep us in compliance with the governor's plans. They also leave room for changes in the governor's, governor's plans. As it was made perfectly clear, they could change at any time. They also take into consideration, uh, the cleaning. There's, uh, they want you to clean more than you normally do. And I talked, uh, with Brian about this for the vault complexes. He says he cleans once a day. I don't think that's what they're looking at. I don't, uh, for groups like that. This plan, I believe, um, allows us flexibility. That way, we're not caught with her, um, looking back trying to change in a hurry.
You know, watching the world, or the thirteen news tonight, you know, there's, from the weekend, there's definitely an uphill cruise in the number of cases.
Yes.
There it is. They're also doing more testing.
Well, I understand that, more testing they do, the more they're going to find and, you know.
But if you look at the map, you've got clusters.
Yeah.
You've got Kansas City, you've got Ford County, you've got Fiddy County, Sedgwick County, you've got Wichita. Ford County surpassed Windock County, who was way ahead of them to begin.
Right, yes.
There's no way we can open the playgrounds before June the fifteenth?
I'm taking into cleaning, um, we're not there to clean off the playground. I think we should sanitize it before we even open it back up. And this provides for, I mean, just that space, that time, that timeframe, the, the, the parks are pretty much open right now. They can run around, they can do whatever on the parks, uh, provided they social distance, but having a place where kids and, and adults that are playing with their kids touching everything and then the next group comes along touching everything and then the next group comes along and we can't control that. I think this is a best case scenario.
And how, how are you going to clean? Something needs to be cleaned.
Right.
But I feel like if the parents are going to take their kids there, they can take stuff and they could, they can sanitize the horses and the swings or whatever and they're probably going to. I mean, I feel like we need to have something for these people and the kids to do. I mean, kids are, neighborhood kids are out there playing. I mean, these kids are running around the neighborhoods or playing in clusters and stuff anyway, so I mean, we've got to have something for these kids to do.
I think if we can't trust parents to keep their kids from doing that, then how the heck can we trust them to clean equipment?
And some people will be very conscientious about it, but there's going to be a big group that won't.
There's a lot that won't.
I know, but I still feel like we need to, to do something. I mean, Topeka, other places are opening stuff up. I mean, they're not going to have people running around there spraying down the equipment and stuff for these people. I mean, I, we can try it. I mean, if it gets to where we have a problem, we can shut stuff down again.
Well, that's too late.
You can't do that.
Once you know you have a problem, you're past the point.
Well, I know that.
And, and we're lucky because we have no confirmed cases in March of town.
Yeah.
I know, but people are wanting to have stuff.
Yeah, it's on, Terry, what do you say?
Why, why are we exceeding phase one without the council's approval?
Well, the playground, we discussed, the playground we discussed at a previous council meeting, I know. That's probably been what a couple, two or three council meetings.
Did we vote to exceed phase one?
Uh, we, we voted to delete, to shut down the playground equipment.
We did?
Not normally discussed, yeah. I can't remember if we actually voted or if it was just a.
It was a consensus, um, and the majority of, this goes off of our code book.
This what?
The code book says, um, if you read under city administrator, uh, A, city administrator A, uh, says I have control over managerial control of the city operations. It also says under, there's two other options, that I have, uh, uh, maintenance and all that of buildings and stuff like that. It also says I control the people, uh, I manage the people that report to me. All that things, I mean, that's just that. But there was a council meeting where the ca, the council did kind of consent to, uh, closing down the playgrounds.
Yeah, because we got a whole bunch of kids up there that weekend. And because it was said that it can live on plastic and metal bios for so long, we took a consensus that to close down the playgrounds, tape them off.
Right.
Yes, but not, but not until a date. Yes, we did that, but we didn't say until when.
No.
Correct.
Yes.
Well, we're going to wait and see how this. And see what the governor said and what she hopes to add.
And the county and the city can make stricter guidelines than what the state has enforced.
But the state just gives us a guideline, what we do.
What we have to do.
Yeah.
Yeah. But ours can, can be stricter than what the state has.
Right.
Put out.
Right. Uh, I did pass these dates, um, through Sue Rhodes and she agreed with.
What?
I passed these dates through Sue Rhodes, or the county health officials, and she liked these dates. These were, um, she did say the county was fighting by the, 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 the state, but she agreed with these dates right here.
So if this, the state's phase two does not happen on the eighteenth, it goes another week or so, then all these dates are going to get pushed back again?
Uh, right, right now, we can leave them as is. That, that's how it's set up. If phase two starts a little bit late, we're still there. These dates comply with that.
Okay.
And we're not going to open the pool until the eighteenth of June?
Nineteenth of June, if we can get the proper staff. That's, that's actually a lynchman right there. If we, because right now, I heard the Beatrice, I was told by a parent who was trying to get her, her son certified, said that Beatrice YMCA is not certified this year at all, and that's our main source. So if we can't get people certified, uh.
But Jefferson City's YMCA has openings at the end of this one.
Right.
To certify or reset?
I don't know, we're, we're scheduled to go down there at the end of this.
I just was curious, you know, they were certifying or resetting?
If, if there's a, if, yeah.
You, you can do some of it online, but your hands on, we're scheduled to go down there and do the hands on.
Right.
Right.
But there's two different classes that you have to take. I don't know if they could certify or reset or both.
Right, you can do two of them online and then a hands on and you got, you're certified.
So you're saying.
But that you.
I didn't get no answer yet.
Yes, Terry.
Why are we exceeding phase one?
This, exceeding phase one, phase one is, uh, ten people or less, uh, in a group.
Right, it says education activities and venues are allowed to operate.
Which education?
Phase one.
Which education? Are you talking, where, what?
What venue are you talking about?
Yeah. What venue?
What venue? Venue, what's the educational venue or?
Baseball practices are a good example.
That's not an educational venue.
In fact, that's, that's shut, that's shut down in phase one. All, all, all organized sports complexes are shut down in phase one.
Okay.
In phase one, that's, but that's what Terry asked about, what's phase one.
And, and I understand that, but why are we shutting them down for an extra month?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
And actually, two weeks.
We're exceeding, we're exceeding what the governor says is what we're doing.
It says sports facilities are in phase two, so that's where that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can open those up.
Well, this is not thirty or more.
And you're swimming pools and community centers.
I know that.
But there's no practice before June first.
That's well already in phase two.
But if, but if we just opened the pool and didn't use the slides and stuff, I mean, we did, we, we wouldn't need as many lifeguards.
Wait a minute, we got three subjects going.
Yeah.
Let's go to one subject and we'll come back to pool.
So what do we thought about? Ball fields, parks, or swimming pool?
I'd say pool first and.
Okay. Here's my deal on, on pool. Yeah, I'd like to see it open on the nineteenth. Here's the problem. We know that Junction, or not Junction City, Wauwahga's closed air pool.
Yes.
And Manhattan's closed air pool.
Well, they haven't got anything open, period.
Right. So what makes you think these people's not going to want to plan a day trip to Marysville, Kansas to come to our pool?
They will.
They already do.
So, you know, we're going to need all the lifeguards we can get.
Yeah.
Well, just limit it to how many people can go in.
It's a public facility.
Who, who's going, who's going to be in charge of telling that seven-year-old who's allowed by our, our policy that would, to walk in by him, him or herself? Who's going to tell that seven-year-old that this got dropped off by their parents that they have to leave?
And it's a local kid, not a kid from out of town.
Well, you just have, you have to publish it that only so many people can go and that's the way it is. I mean, they're, they're limiting a lot of things.
The league lawyers advised us not to do that. The league lawyers in the last webinar advised us not to try to do that.
Frankfurt and Blue Rapids are opening up now.
No, I mean to limit, to stop people because they can't be, till you get over ninety. They are, they said you will most likely get into a discrimination suit if you do that. So don't, don't try to police that number because somehow it will come around to you. Don't try to police the number. Wait till you can get enough in your pool. I mean, that's what the league lawyers told us in the webinar last Thursday.
And I understand that, but you can't compare Frankfurt and Blue Rapids pool to Marysville. Size is, it's not even comparable.
I know, but other, other places are opening up too, though. I mean, it's not, we're not going to, we wouldn't be the only ones, so.
There's a lot that are closing too, though, so.
Manhattan, yeah, like, Manhattan's totally closed and we couldn't open till June first the way it was after the, after, because of the repairs that are going to be made.
Yeah.
So we're not, we can't open till June first anyway.
Well, I'd say if you don't put the slides and stuff in, you could open without the slides and you wouldn't have to have as many lifeguards either, so.
Can the pool operate correctly without the water flow, the slides, nothing working correctly?
The, the water flow, the slides, yes. That, that, yes, we could turn on that.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Some pools are based on the way they operate.
No, that, that you can shut off.
But isn't that what, part of what they were going to fix?
The, they were going to do the pool slides, they're going to install a, the pad at the bottom of, of the family slide, um, which needs to be without water in the pool.
That's what I was going to say, I thought that pad had to have none, you couldn't have water in the pool.
The dumping feature.
Add some stainless steel welds to make.
Yeah, I mean, we've got, still got repairs to make, but, um, yeah, that, that, they just asked us again, do we have flexibility because their schedule keeps moving around? So they already moved us back to May twenty second, that same week that they were supposed to be in, um, but that means we can't start filling until that Monday following.
How many days did you, did they say they estimated for repairs?
They take three days to fix it.
Okay. And then it takes a week to fill the pool?
Yeah, and get it warm and, well, I mean, get it all set up and, and going.
So really, we're, we're, we're not opening the pool because of COVID reasons. We're, we're not opening because of repairs and staffing problems.
We're just basically pushing it back one more week than what we're going to have to anyway, so we don't have to deal with the.
Yeah, that's ninety or less.
Limits on occupancy and the sterilization.
The pool cleaning thing.
And then, then we're going to have to employ anybody extra to make sure the restrooms are clean then?
That's a fear of ours too.
CDC hasn't come out with the final regulations on how often you have to clean and what surfaces they have to be at the pool.
That, that is, that is a fear of ours that they're, well, they're, CDC, the, the order actually says we have to follow CDC guidelines when, for pools and cleaning the bathrooms and stuff like that. CDC has not issued their guidelines. and cleaning the bathrooms and stuff like that. CDC has not issued their guidelines. So are, are, if we open up and all of a sudden CDC goes, you gotta do this, what happens when we can't?
Because I know that was the reason they closed that travel center there on I-70 east of Topeka, was because the COVID was found in their restrooms.
Yeah.
I was in Costco on Saturday, and they, in their bathroom, all the faucets were out of order. They wouldn't even let you use them.
Wow.
So, we know it's.
Yeah, it makes me wonder when you walk around the store, they're making, the toilets were still open though?
Yeah, the toilets, well, I had my hand sanitizer.
That's just not pretty.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, this, all these guidelines come into consideration with, with the possibility of, of ex, extra cleaning responsibility that we would be required to do. Um, and these kinda fit in with our, with a little bit of flexibility, um, and, and trying to get everything set up and making sure we can, uh, make the community safe. At least as safe as we possibly can.
So that's, is that all the discussion on?
Well, then I'd like to make a motion.
We're gonna, okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we don't exceed what the governor has already set up for us. I think it's good. We gotta open up our town eventually, and people gotta start doing things except hiding from this. And we gotta open it up to a point that, well, just like when I was talking to Senator earlier today, the baseball King County rule practice, they take care of themselves. They don't hurt nobody. And what we're gonna stop, stop them from being able to practice, so they won't even get to play this year. We need to open, at least stick with what the governor said. My motion is not to exceed the governor's phases. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion?
I just wanted to put out there, I think we must be doing some things right. I mean, we have a lot of people coming in and out of this community, a lot of people in this community, and we've gotten this far. I don't know, I know it's discomfortable. I have kids who wanna do sports, and wanna do this, and wanna do that, and it's tough on them. I have a call, a, you know, high school senior who doesn't get a graduation. I have, you know, I've been working from home. I have family that I can't visit on Mother's Day. I get it, there's restrictions, there's pain points, it's not great. It's also temporary. There's no need to panic and rush into anything. I think being smart and staging it in, and being, erring on the side of caution is the smart way to play it. I think it's surfaced well, and I think we should continue that. So it's just not too soon.
So if I'm understanding this motion, basically, we're taking away any flexibility that council would have to set our own guidelines, and we're just saying that we're gonna follow what the governor says. Well, we have to follow what the county says. It's gonna be up to the county too, cause if the county changes any guidelines, we have to abide by what the county does too. So I don't know if you wanna word that, you're gonna go with what the governor is gonna go with, or what the county is gonna go with.
But then each county.
Those are, yeah, those are the minimum guidelines. You have to do that, and you can do it.
Just gonna sort what the governor has to say. But each county, uh, county commissioners make the guidelines, yea or nay.
Yeah.
You know, more or less with what the governor said.
Yeah. I, I would be hesitant to give up, and I'm not gonna vote on this, but I, as a council member, I'd be hesitant to give up my ability to make up my own decisions, case by case, and what the facts are in the ground, in the city. I mean, if you have, say you got cases two weeks from now, what the governor says and what's right for Kansas City may not be right for us here in Marysville, cause we're at a different place than Kansas City, or Wichita, or some other place, that maybe has been through the worst of it, and is coming out on the backside.
Maybe it's a peak.
Yes, it's already peaked.
I'd say make the subject to change.
Well, you could change, but the motion's not change, the motion, I mean, the way you're going right now, basically, you're changing.
What, what Austin's laid out on these open bids.
Yeah, I, I just don't, I don't think we need to tie our own hands. I think we can, I mean, I, I think businesses, business-wise, if I were a small business owner, I definitely would want us opening up. And I understand why people feel the way they do, but I, I don't think, I think we're on a good track. I think this is a pretty good plan. I think us having a little flexibility within the govern, within the county's rubric, within the government's rules, I think we, I think we're doing correctly, I think we're acting correctly.
Look, if I did open up on one, on Monday, I already measured out, they have to be six foot apart if they wanna wait inside. They have to make sure, they're gonna be six foot away from the chair. Everybody has, and they have to be masked, they're gonna be gloved. There's gonna be cleaning whenever they get up. Nobody's gonna be running in and out. You know, these are things, they're just sort of your common sense things. You know, and these are the things that they have said, because when, when she said, no barbers, no hair salons, blah, 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 I was like, oh, here we go. But I understand why she's doing it, because like you said, I, they've had this up sweep, and now they're coming down, and we are the last two counties up on this modern park over on the east end. We have not had any cases.
I guess now my neighborhood kids are getting really restless.
I know they are, and they, all the kids in the neighborhoods are, and, you know, you can't stop them in the neighborhood, but you know what? You would, you would be crushed if they went to the hospital, ended up on bus riders.
Well, I realize that, but I mean, they're, 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 they're running in pa, I mean, they're just running around together.
That's a big parent, that.
Well, I understand that, but they want something to do, that, you know, parents are working, and kids are, you know, playing together and running around, and.
It's a battle. I came home one day from work, and I had like nine kids running on my backyard, and I sent them home, and then later they were back.
Yeah. And, and the problem with that is if I knew who they were, is they came from out of town to stay with their grandmother from Kansas City. No shot, yeah. So I don't know, I don't know, if you wanna go, I feel like we've had, we've done, and taught, we've done real well so far. What if she comes up with something, and, and it really isn't good for our community?
It don't matter.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Cause once she puts her stamp on it, that's it.
Be more strict, can't be less.
Yeah, we can't be less.
Some of the problems I have is, I'll be honest with you, I don't see a problem with having baseball practice. I didn't say a game, I didn't say a tournament. I said baseball practice. Softball practice, I mean.
Kids burn out since game.
If you guys think about practice, you're not really that close to each other. The worst thing you gotta do is when they're making in and out is, they gotta stand a little bit farther apart. Baseball more than other sports, that's true, cause you can't play really close to each other. It doesn't work. But you know, in like softball field, you know what I'm saying? And.
They caution this, no bats, no helmets. They have to be cleaned in between, and you have to figure out how to clean your bleachers if you let people in. Between gates, so you can't have more than 30 people.
Here's what the bat and the helmet situation is, is I would say probably 80% of the kids have their own bats and helmets.
Oh, that's good. I mean, cause they need to.
And I'm being really honest. I'm, I'm not saying it's great, but I'm just saying that there is a way that we could give them certain things they can do, cause that's.
But then, the, the problem was if you have to clean stuff, where are you gonna get supplies to clean it? Cause right now, you can't get any aerosol wipes, any wipes.
Oh, I know. I wonder how hard it's gonna be to find coaches. I mean, in theory, I guess that you had an extra coach, it would be like the cleaning coach? You laugh. You laugh, but here's what it is, is this, here's your cannon aerosol. They come in from batting practice, the bat, the helmet, you spray it, you set it there, give them a dry one. I mean, if there's a way to structure it, I know they, not always easy to find volunteers anyway to do some of those coaching gigs. And I'm not saying they can play at the playgrounds or nothing like that. I mean, literally, if the parents drop them off, it gives the kids a little bit of, some uniformity, it gets them back to doing something a little bit. Cause another concern that I'm gonna start getting as this goes, with this timeline is, is you got 15 days to get in shape. You have to get your arm in shape, the running, you might have more injuries than you have in shape.
If, if you guys wanna provide guidance, if that's the, if that's the key right there is the baseball practice or whatever, if you guys wanna provide guidance for that, I, I think that would be great. I, that's, that's, my number one fear is that things need to be clean. In this situation, things need to be clean, and if there is, if you guys wanna provide that.
Can you put a listserv out and find out what the protocols of places that are staging into that farther, what that is? I mean, I'm sure, I don't know, maybe not Beatrice or Concordia, it could be somewhere, but if Lincoln, I think Lincoln's had some struggles, these bigger cities, but they must have some sort of protocol.
I know Manhattan, Manhattan is not running a rec program, but they do have tournaments up on the website that they're going to play on their field.
They have a Chico Park, and then.
How they're doing that, I don't know.
With out-of-town teams or not?
That's gonna be out-of-town teams and everything. Now, I'm not saying, I, I just don't know if they're doing like concession stand, or if they're saying no concession stand, no bathroom type situation. I don't know what they're doing in that.
They told us no concessions till when, because people touch, oh, hot dog, uh, ketchup, mustard, that's what the lawyers were telling us on, on the thing. No concessions.
You basically almost gotta go to the little single serve packets for that type of thing.
Well, or they just, you just have.
Don't have one. Don't have concessions.
It's good. We got a motion in a second. Let's vote on that, and then we can have some more discussion about kind of baseball.
Do you wanna run the motion by again, please?
The motion was, um, that we should not exceed the governor's regulations as posted for the phases.
Correct.
Okay. Price?
No.
Tibia?
No.
Schroller?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Bagman?
Yes, but also like to add what the Kelly's recommendations that they're also. That's a good idea.
Frye?
No.
Berens?
No.
From?
No.
Fails? Five, three, three, five, sorry, three, five.
Okay. Now, uh, so the pool, basically, we're in agreement that we're gonna go with that date?
As long as you got this lifeguard certifications, that'd be.
Yeah.
Yeah, staffing, and the pool repair.
And cleaning regulations.
And that's consensus of council. So now we're on to ball, baseball. Now, what's council's thoughts on that?
Well, I mean, if, if we can find a way to structure it with, you know, clean supplies, cleaning staff, and find a way to make it, you know, a little safer, and we can get the volunteers, parents, or coaches to do that, then I think we can stage into that. I, like Parker said, I mean, of all outdoor activities, you're gonna be more than six feet away pretty much the entire time, and you're only touching so many surfaces with your hands. It's mostly with your feet and other, I mean, as long as Eric, Sherry?
Gloves.
That ball, water bottles.
Water bottles.
That ball, and throw them back and ball right?
Well, yeah, but I'm, I'm saying the glove is probably where.
The glove, the helmet of that.
The virus goes a little.
Yeah.
My glove always stuck. But, you know, I mean, if there's some, if there's some protocols in place, and a lot of common sense, and, I mean, I think kids are, they can learn to do all the things they do playing ball, they can learn to not share water bottles, I hope. I don't think it's doing that on a regular day, thank you, but.
To me, I think the biggest thing is, I mean, when they're in the outfield, they're definitely more than six feet. It's the dugout.
The dugout is the challenge.
I mean, that's the thing that I, it concerns me.
And, and I understand, Jason, but that's the reason I said practice and not games.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm thinking that in practice, I don't, I don't know why you'd be in the dugout. And I think I read that like Lincoln's open fields, they didn't close the dugouts, like they blocked even those, and said, go, you can be on the field, but not the dugout.
Brian, Brian said that he got, he received a list of everything that Nebraska is doing, and it's a ton worse than what we're even talking about right now. He feels it's worse, uh, they, that they're in, putting more restrictions than even the state of Kansas is even thinking about, uh, right now. Um, the all, the, the sticking point with practices is the bathrooms. If we were to ever need to open the bathrooms, I think, uh, or typically, they're open for practices. Uh, I mean, that's, that, that is really the concern. They can social distance, so the ball, uh, keep their own helmet and all that stuff, but when they need to go to the bathroom, they're going to the same point as everybody else.
Yeah, that's a problem.
That's a whole solution.
Wanna have practice, you're not gonna have a bathroom.
I mean, that's, that was.
Well aware.
Yes.
Yeah, I, before you, that's all I can say, well aware.
Because, I mean, you go to Hardee's, and, you know, they got their restrooms at 7:00 close off up there.
We did, I mean, the only reason why we went as extreme, cause previously, we've had, uh, issues where, um, the few, the teams that are practicing basically want us, require us, want to require us to have the bathrooms open, and they, it was not.
Is that rec ball, or is that high school?
That was high school, that was high school.
Are you talking all ages, or are you talking, what ages are you talking that can practice?
Well, I mean, if you open practice up, you open practice up. The, the, the sticking point would be the bathroom, so I mean, that's, that's just it. If they can have the space to social distance and all that stuff, um, that's, that's great. But they, as of right now, we typically have the bathrooms open, and that's where everybody would go and touch the same sort of surface. So that, if we don't wanna open the bathrooms, we can be more leaning on the ba, on the practice.
I, I would not open the bathroom.
I would either.
And I wouldn't open the bathrooms in the parks.
Just keep it on the same.
Yep.
Okay, okay. I mean, we, yeah, we can start, I'll start talking to Brian about practices and stuff like that, and, and.
Yeah, it's like the phase two, that's into a factor.
Right, and so they can practice, uh, no bathrooms, that way, that shared space, uh, which I feel is the, the dangerous portion of this, uh, would, would be taken out of the equation.
Yep.
But that wouldn't start till phase two, right?
Right, yeah, cause all ball complexes are closed due to the governor.
That's May 18th till June 1st, best.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as everything goes to plan, as a practice.
It'd be May 18th, then.
Yep, right.
But for high school kids, it doesn't mean anything, cause case rules still apply.
Yeah.
That's true.
So we can, I can definitely start conversations with Brian on that, because he would be the one to, to maintain that, and, and, and basically police quote-unquote, uh, the ball fields.
There's other coaches here in town too, that we'd like to know that, be, you know, form.
That's why I'm talking to Brian about it.
That they could start on the 18th.
I, I would talk, I, I would talk to Brian, he would be the one talking to the coaches. I don't know any of the coaches.
You what?
I, we don't, I don't keep track of who the coaches are here, cause we don't organize the sports out there. Uh, based on, Brian would be the one.
Brian, give him an email, he does pretty good golf.
Yeah.
Yeah, he does.
What happens after June 1st?
We'll talk about that. Okay.
Okay. And that's ball, what is it, third, trying to take away the third, one of those parks?
Playground, playgrounds, yeah. Back, um, well, we just talked about park bathrooms. He had mentioned that he'd keep them on the same, all, all bathrooms on the same schedule, which I agree, um, to the June 15th. Uh, I think bathroom, playgrounds are on the same level as bathrooms, if not even worse, uh, because, uh, the kids, uh, not everybody's going to the bathroom while they're at the park, but everybody's playing on that playground. That's, that's the way.
And the only way you could do it is have one person designated for each park to go around cleaning the playground equipment all the time, just every day.
Yep.
And that's.
Most cities that open their playgrounds, according to what they told us, they were posting signs that says, please know that we are not sanitizing this equipment, so you're at your own risk. They're trying to protect the liability if somebody gets. I mean, that, that most, that's what lawyers were saying, you know, that very least you should do is put signs up saying, we are not sanitizing the equipment.
And we'd probably do that after, after this. I was thinking about having a permanent sign up anyways, saying exactly that. But I, I'd still say, uh, playgrounds and park bathrooms on D-15.
I just remember seeing on TV someplace going in, taking this aerosol thing and going around. Does that do any good?
We, I would think we, I, the best I can come up with, and I haven't talked with our, our staff about this, would be to load up one of our tanks and put a sanitizer on it.
Oh, that's true.
Something that's a little bit, uh, make sure it's not pooling up somewhere where a kid will come by and lick it, or anything like that, but, um, basically, trying to clean, at least a one-time clean, uh, while we can. basically, trying to clean, at least a one-time clean, uh, while we can. But, um, what I, so what I got from this with all, uh, the fall parks, um, uh, practicing, we'll talk with, uh, Brian about just practicing, uh, starting around, uh, the eighteenth. But beyond that, uh, we'll continue to discuss, especially if the governor decides to change what she, what the plan is gonna be. Um, another item that goes right along with this, uh, I know I have, uh, council meetings, uh, for the, for the, the month of May, just like this. Um, that keeps our social distancing, oh, I may keep talking about social distancing. Uh, if there's anybody, and you can tell me now, you can tell me later, uh, that's not comfortable with starting meetings back up, starting June, and the first meeting in June, please let me know, and then we can discuss continuing doing this, because I want you guys to be comfortable. Uh, I know we're, we're here for a business meeting, and we wanna, uh, but we also wanna be safe, and we also want to show that we are being safe, 'cause, um, we are, I mean, setting the example, so, um, you don't have to tell me right now, but, uh, if you wanna bring that up to me later on, and we can talk, uh, we can maybe, uh, if we need to change a decision on that, uh, we can talk about it next council meeting, but I wanted to, I wanted to make sure I was considering everybody's, uh, stance on, on that, so. Um, let me think, there was, uh, uh, okay, uh, some, something before I get to financials. I was approached by Ingraham, uh, the, the contractor who bid the waterline project, they said they are losing projects, and would entertain possibly splitting our project up right now, and doing a portion of it. Is there any interest in doing that? They talked about splitting it in half. I don't feel, I think, I think that, uh, still kinda stresses, uh, what we budgeted, uh, for this project. Uh, is there any interest from the council to do any portion of this project? I don't see it splitting up any more than half, because it's, Larry and Jenkins are the main portions of it. There are some that go north, um, uh, two blocks that, I mean, that's, or it goes, it covers two blocks, but that's, uh, they connect to the new lines, uh, in that way. But it's, I, I, I really don't, uh, see it splitting more than two, it couldn't possibly split into a third, smaller project. They wanted me to pass that by you, um, they would, uh, uh, really enjoy, uh, working with us, if possible.
They come down their price per.
They didn't say what they were gonna come down in price. But I know, I'm still working on trying to get money, uh, the number lined up for the towers, uh, that's what we, we discussed after we turned down trying to go with, uh, a waterline project. So if we wanna stay on that plan, uh, we can still stay on that plan, and try for towers this year, and plan for, uh, a waterline project next year.
I think we need to save the tower plan.
So too, yeah. You know, this year, this, everything's been so crazy, you know, why not commit ourselves?
Okay. Uh, that, that's completely fine. Uh, okay. Uh, for financials, uh, looking at the general fund, it is about ninety, ninety-five thousand lower than last year at this time. Most of this is because we purchased Aedes, uh, we paid for the repairs of City Park Playground, um, and the, uh, insurance payment came out. Uh, and a little bit of, or, uh, some increase on that insurance, uh, kind of affected our, our general fund. Uh, the water fund is al, also lower, due in part to that insurance payment as well. Uh, the sewer fund continues to increase, and the sales fact, sales tax fund decreased, uh, after we, uh, paid the ADA rams. Uh, the sales tax decreased due to the ADA rams. Um, uh, but, I, there's nothing, there's nothing in here, it's just projects we paid for, nothing out of, out of line, uh, with our budget. Uh, our, our revenues have, haven't decreased just yet, and in fact, we've gotten more sales tax, uh, over the first few months. It, I think this last payment was, uh, due to some, uh, panic buying, but it wasn't out, it wasn't completely out of line, uh, with what we've gotten previously. We do anticipate, um, the state said they've, their sales tax has decreased by about, or, if you combine sales tax with comp use, which is, comes on the same payment, uh, they decreased about four percent, uh, on, on their sales tax. I don't know if it's gonna hit us that hard, uh, but, uh, we'll have to see, because that, that payment is reflected in our next month's, and, uh, uh, later this mon, uh, later this month's payment in sales tax. Uh, the property tax, uh, was due, uh, yesterday, or, or today, right, 'cause they extended the, the payment date to the, today. Uh, we will see that payment come, uh, I forget, end of the month, or beginning of next month.
June.
So they didn't change due dates, uh, so we're, we'll, that'll be a good testament to, to our general fund revenues. But right, right now, we're trying, we're trying to hold, hold the line on, on expenditures, just to make sure we're good. And that was all I had for expenditures, or, uh, finances.
Okay. Uh, next we have the state committee reports, uh.
Street.
Yeah, with what Austin just said in his financial report, is there any way we could put in, implement a five-year plan to maybe work some streets, a block a year? Like on Twelfth Street, like from Carolina to Jenkins, and look at other streets?
We, we do currently have a five-year plan, uh, that, the one we're working on right now was the next in line. Uh, we do have a list, um, that we're going through, yes.
Okay. And that's something we usually go over at the workshop, which we haven't had yet, we'll probably overdue for one.
Right, um, well, the, around the end of the month, beginning of next month is a great time, because eventually, we'll get, uh, the county's numbers. If we do one at the end of this month, uh, there, we would probably set it up just like this, and video it, so we don't, um, so we just handle it that way. At the beginning of next month, uh, if we do as planned and open up City Hall, we could do a normal, um, uh, meeting and stuff like that. We can, just, I think we should discuss, uh, a time, if you're okay, uh, at the next council meeting.
But we could do a block a year, right?
Yeah, no, and, and we tried that, the next, next year's, uh, project, uh, is, um, Twelfth Street by the high school. That's the next one.
Because schools going in on that one with this.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, is.
They're not gonna do their parking section?
They haven't said anything to me.
So that's why we delayed it a year, so they could come up with funding to do their.
Yeah.
Theirs along with the school.
I, I'd have to, uh, I'll, I'll double check, um, but they haven't gone back with me on that.
Really don't want anybody on parking.
City pay for it.
Don't even get me started.
Yeah, they don't have any parking anyway.
I know, the only parking we have.
Okay, any else on the streets?
Yes.
Yes.
There's still the barricades by Thirteenth and Elm, and there's some on Eighth and Walnut, so why are they still there?
Um, Thirteenth and Elm is a sinkhole, and that storm sewer is really like sixteen feet deep, uh, to get at it is a challenge. So we're try, we're trying to figure out how to get down there to find out where this, where the storm sewer is dragging that, that, um, uh, in there, and then Eighth and Elm.
Eighth and Walnut?
Eighth and Walnut.
Eighth and Walnut, I mean, yeah. I'm saying Elm, okay.
Eighth, no, uh, Eighth and Walnut.
They just put that, uh, patch in there today.
Oh.
Out of the, uh.
Yeah, I don't, I, yeah, they must've just patched it.
It's not the worst basin?
Oh, you.
By the swimming pool.
By the swimming pool?
They just patched that.
They poured a patch?
Yeah.
I don't know, it's been there for quite a while, so I don't know what.
Uh, must've been, that, they, I, they must've just fixed it today.
They did it today, they poured, they, they, they poured that, whatever that hot stuff is, they got that, that mastic stuff out of the machine.
Yeah, they were, they were heating that up today, so.
Yeah, but it's, they poured it, it's probably three quarters of an inch thicker better in that hole. He said it was gonna take a little while for it to cool off, so.
And that is, that is Thirteenth and, and Elm is, uh, is a sinkhole, in, up on the curve?
Yes, in, in, if you go, there's a piece of plywood, plywood over in the ground, um, and if you lift that up, there's a hole that, uh.
I can see a piece of plywood, it looked like it was in the grass.
Underneath, underneath the barricades.
Oh, okay, 'cause it's up on the curve.
Yeah, yeah, in, in the, in the grass.
Oh, okay.
Is this behind the courthouse?
Yes.
In that little rock house?
No, 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 on, uh, southeast corner.
Across the street from the rock house.
Yeah, 'cause the one at the rock house, we fixed it a few years back.
That's the one where, in that house, and they know it's gonna fall in, and they.
Yep.
How much the problem is, they just can't reach it.
It's, it's, yeah, trying to get down to where the hole in the storm sewer could be. So they dug in that area, and they've, they've, they've had to dig and dig and dig to get down there.
Right.
Do they bring a camera to that?
We need a bigger machine.
Um. Do they camera that, or anything to see?
They have a camera, and, and that's probably the first thing we need to do, figure out where that's at. Uh, sometimes camera in the, the storm sewer, because it's perforated, uh, getting that camera down there, is a challenge. But, um, no, it's, it's been an ongoing discussion on how we should fix that.
And then, are they ever gonna, are we, have we talked anymore about doing, putting a motion light there at Eighth and Center? Are we gonna, or is it just always gonna stay a stoplight, even though there isn't much traffic there very often?
At Eighth, at Eighth and Center, you, um, we, we talked about that a couple of years ago, found out how much it was gonna cost, and we took, decided to put that on hold for other projects.
It can't just be, like, you just can't switch it to caution light?
Um, I would never be able to get across the street. Like that, we use that all the time, you may not see us, but we use it all the time.
Land all traffic, especially certain times of day.
At three thirty. At three thirty.
That's, um, that's how often, twice a day?
Well, there are multiple shifts, so.
There's a lot of traffic.
I, I've actually had to wait for a number of times to get out on the highway there.
Yeah. No, it's more, it's used more, it's used more than, we're right here, we use it all the time. The bank uses it all the time, I mean, it stops traffic for us. Yeah, they go back and forth between their, their bank branches. Yeah, it's, there's more traffic.
They could, they could push a button if they wanted to go across there, I mean, there's a lot of times people are sitting there and waiting, and waiting, and waiting, and there's no traffic, you know?
It's a, two, maybe a max two-minute wait.
Well, I know, but.
I, I, I've driven through it a thousand times, and I've maybe, I don't know, though I can think of a time when I didn't have somebody, maybe nobody was waiting, but they came along in the cycle period. It's a pretty fast life.
Yeah.
I think you made a caution light, I think all you're gonna do is speed the traffic up.
Right.
Right.
'Cause I think once you get clear that one up there, you're just, you're gonna gain, you're gonna gain speed.
The one, is it up where they're doing the work, I think, right, they got it as a caution light now, and if people just.
Yeah, yeah. And for a while, it was going off because the construction was setting it off, or whatever.
Well, I finally called it, because it was going off every, every, about every thirty seconds, I think, and people were back, traffic was getting backed up, it was getting to be a real nuisance, so.
Yeah, good.
But, it took them three days to get a fix, I think.
And speaking of which, at that light, there on the south side, is there angle parking going on on the west side of, uh, Fourteenth Street there?
Um, their property, on their property.
That's not gonna interfere with that stoplight at all, right? I mean, people backing out to, to go south on the light cycles? The eyes.
The camera, the camera puts a digital line right where the cars go.
I just wondered, I don't know how, if it was painting the whole street, you, I wouldn't want somebody backing out, and then that sets the light off every time.
Right, no, it's, no, it shouldn't, 'cause you, they would have to.
I, I assume they talked to us about putting the laydown curb in?
Yeah. Yep. While it was open.
Uh, I get it, they don't have much parking, I understand that.
So, yeah, it shouldn't, it shouldn't affect it.
Okay.
Any else on the street? Uh, water and wastewater? Uh, parks and rec? Cemetery and airport? Police and fire?
We have, we have fire meetings, uh, Wednesday, and B and G, with B and G, and, uh, we talked about the finishing plans for the fire ha, house, so we could go to bids, so, I don't, when was the start date supposed to be, hopefully?
They said bidding, I think, November, uh, we were opening bids.
Yeah.
So they could, they could have, we could know what, who is gonna be, uh, the contractor by then.
But I mean, when were we gonna, when were they gonna start on the new firehouse?
The, so we, when, we'd open bids, and then we'd figure out the timeline after that.
Okay, so that would have maybe more.
I think we're in November, I think that's what they said.
For bid opening, so they can get it on their schedule for next year.
Wow.
That's, that's their estimate, well, that's their timeline right now.
Why are they taking so long? Hey, you gotta have it, they bid out in six weeks.
What's that?
That should be bid out in six weeks, either they're gonna jump, gonna jump monitor, not. I mean, we do water lines in eight weeks.
I think you're giving them too long yet.
I mean, gee money, that's a long ways down the line.
You're losing a lot of prime building weather right now.
Well, they're still, put it, they just got the foundation design, um, and the ceiling, I mean, it's, it's, they're, they're putting it all together right now, and that's.
Oh, I understand that also.
Yeah.
I'm dealing with a project, and we gave it two weeks. Decide if they're gonna bid on it, and have to bid it.
Right.
Crazy.
Okay, any else, police and fire? Admin and finance?
Oh, one just there. I thought I'd mention it, uh, we're talking, son, the highlights were concentrating a little bit about maybe getting ready to pay off some of those swimming pool loans. I don't know, but what maybe I ought to be doing, so thinking about trying to repeal and replace, so we can keep the money coming in, this sixty, point six old sales tax, it's been going towards the pool all this time.
Yeah, but that doesn't.
It's a twenty-year sales tax. Twenty-year sales tax regardless of whether we're paying debt or not.
I thought it changed it if it, if we paid down on it.
No, no, it, the sales tax itself doesn't change when we pay off the debt. It, it goes for twenty years, so twenty, tw, what was that, twenty thirty-four.
I hope that's right.
How much do we have to pay for it again to do this?
Um, it's normal, it's the, yeah. But we have to have, for, for bonds, over two million dollars, we have to have a financial advisor.
And what percent does he get?
I think I'd, I'd have to look.
Yeah, I'd have to look. But, yeah, it's, that, any, any financial advisor would be taking up.
Do you think it's more, Diane?
For what?
If his percent was more, I thought maybe you knew, you remember.
No, I don't remember, I mean, and I, it's probably changed by now, I don't know what. I know it's not he, but it used to be.
Any else on admin finance? City attorney? Think we had anything, did we?
No report.
Okay, good. Roundtable discussion? Start off, I guess, with Pete Parker?
I'm starting.
The only thing I can think of right at the time is, uh, when looking through the dates of stuff that's opening and stuff, do we have anything down at City Hall or the police station that keeps the social distancing thing worked out, limiting on that? Reason I ask, if this stuff comes around again.
Reason I ask, if this stuff comes around again, I'm trying to figure out how to function and be able to function a little bit longer.
The police station has put something in place, and then you have one person working down here for a while.
They split their department, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I thought we had, I thought, I remember seeing something where we had set some stuff up.
Actually got two or three working out of here.
They were, they, they, they split it in half for the police department. We are working on ideas to allow for social distancing within here for, for public, maybe a, a, a table placed in the, in the right spot where people can just, a lot of people just come in and drop their bill off and, and leave. So we're, we're looking at that, yeah.
I didn't know if you guys needed like, lack of the correct term, a sneeze guard or whatever around them, that L-shaped desk up there.
We were looking at those as well.
We talked about that, we thought about if we put a table far enough back, we have plenty of room, that that would be six feet back, and they could leave their stuff on that table, we would go get it, they could, you know, fill out paperwork for pool passes and those type of things.
I have seen where we can just, we can buy sneeze guards for that purpose.
We have a new building inspector and a zoning administrator, I guess?
Yes.
Will Ralph?
Will Ralph is our new building and zoning inspector, or, yeah, zoning administrator, yes.
Okay. And the cemetery looks really nice this weekend for Mother's Day.
Thank you.
We were out there, the, Dale's gang did a really good job. And I don't know, I think that maybe the tree up in front of Freeze's old building might be dead, I'm not sure. Either that or it's hardly sprouted, and they get out, so are we liable for that now, or is it still under warranty?
No, that's not one of the new trees, that's an old tree.
It is?
It was never planted correctly, and it's one of the old crab apple, I think, or whatever's the next tree over. You know, the only trees on that block that are new are the three, one in front of State Farm, and the other two in front of Farm Bureau. Those are the only ones being planted on that block this last time.
So why didn't we have it taken out and replanted?
'Cause it was still growing the last year, it had leaves on it last year. Yeah, or in the year before that, so it, yeah. It, it's been slowly dying, it just wasn't a part of the plan when, when we initially came up with it.
Okay. Now, are we sending out any notices yet, nuisance notices?
Yes.
We have?
Yes.
Okay. And, let's see, I thought I had one more. Oh, and they're putting in a new sewer line, I guess, between Fourteenth and Fifteenth on Broadway?
Yes, it is an old clay pipe that was found to be sagging by Midland, the people who are, were cleaning out our, our sewers, and that was, it was set to be lined, but they said it needed to be replaced, two hundred and twenty-five feet or something like that. Not a full block, just within the construction zone between the two manholes. And it's twelve feet deep, so it was, it's a challenge.
So it's gonna be a while before the streets open then?
No, they're working on it right now.
Yeah, well, I know they are.
Yeah. But they're gonna, they are pouring, they poured the curb for Fifteenth Street, so they should, the next thing would be to pour Fifteenth Street. So they'll get that open sooner for people to get, get by.
Be good to have fifteen, at least one of the streets open then, so.
Yes, yes, definitely. And it, it looks like if, if it takes, it looks like they're planning on having both Fifteenth and Fourteenth opened up, if, if I'm looking at their plan right, so they, that Broadway could be closed fixing that sewer line and making sure it all is compacted right, and everybody can go north and south.
Yeah, well, one or the other would be, would be nice, but it's not taking very long. Okay, I think that's all I have, thank you.
Terry?
No.
Keith?
Couple cleanup of properties. Ninth Street between Calhoun and Austin, is that a work in progress, perhaps?
It's, it's been a work in progress for a while, if that's what I'm thinking of.
On the corner? Ninth between Calhoun and Austin. That's been a work in progress, yeah.
That paperwork's already been through, right? Do we see any need for a compliance officer, like what Bitchman doing?
We do, Derek Martin is our compliance, is our code enforcement. He's been sending, he's the one who's been doing that. He's been sending out notices and stuff like that.
And through that, and I had been texting our shop manager, and our shop rate was one twenty an hour. So he didn't see any reason why we couldn't put radio and thermostat in a generator, so. I mean, if you're wanting to retract that motion and explore other options.
I don't know that we should retract the motion maybe, but we should definitely check that next time. Next time it's an option, I mean, we can keep the business local, not pay expenses of travel time. I, I understand maybe the expertise for certain equipment isn't there, but it'd be worth exploring. So it's a pile for me.
Anyone else?
That's our good.
Colleen? Devin?
Nothing this evening, sir?
I don't really have anything else either, so.
On the nuisance thing, are we gonna get a list again like we did last time, so that we know who, what properties have?
We've just been trying to get them in, in order, get them listed, so, yeah, we can have a list going.
Who's your juror?
Second.
All takers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So Terry, can you find that? Sorry, did you find that?
Yeah, I did. All fine.
You want to picture back then?
What?
You want to picture back?
Congratulations.